Okay.
Hello, Mr. Graham.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Brusatti, how are you?
Doing okay, how are you guys?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Hey, guys. Hey, Shami. Good, good, thanks. Hey, Mikey.
Hey, how are you?
How you doing? Good, good, thanks. Good.
It's snowing in Manatee.
It's kinda raining. I think the storm's over, really. We missed it. No.
Not so much in Breckenridge, let me tell you.
Are you in Breck?
Yeah, I head up, I went up yesterday.
Is it coming down?
It is definitely coming down right now, yes.
I was in Breck one time and over at Peak Eight. I had a little job at the cross-country ski school over there and it snowed three feet one afternoon and evening.
Yeah, they're calling for between two and three. We'll see what happens here.
That's cool. I got to camp out in the office.
Alright, so. You go, Mike.
Oh, hey, hey, I love it. I wish I was there.
Right.
Damn.
It's coming down pretty good.
Oh, you're in Breckenridge?
Yeah, I went up yesterday. Green break. Hi, James.
Oh, is this your?
Yes, my share.
Good, good, how are you?
Very good.
Not too bad. Same as.
Where is that word? Close the time.
Do we start? Elena is with us.
Hi.
Hi, Elena, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Doing great. We're all ready to start here. Think that is a yes. I'll give you one more second here and we'll see. Hi, Larry.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Natalie. EC One joined as well. Alright. This is the Manager Springs Metropolitan District, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. It is three thirty-one P M. Lana, would you be nice and do the roll call for us?
Treasurer, Ralph Jacobson.
Here.
Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Director Michael Graham.
Here.
Secretary Michael Brusatti.
Here.
And Chairman Shami Shalomo.
I'm here. Alright, we just gotta approve of the agenda. Any questions about the agenda or is everyone okay with it?
Looks good.
Yep, looks good.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That would be five to zero. Alright, reports, parking report, I mean, I believe either James or Juan. Larry, James. Uh, how are you?
So, did everybody get the documents that were uploaded for the report there?
Yes.
Yes.
I do.
Okay, good. I did make sure I provided both the citation breakdown. And then I also provided just the overall revenue for the month. For this year and last year's. And it's got a breakdown of everything. Also, does anybody have questions about anything on the?
I do. What's the difference between the street expired meter and the lot expired meter?
Um, so with this, we do have some new folks enforcing. There's really not much difference between those two, except for one just designates that they wrote it in a parking lot. The other just indicates that it was written on the street. But the fines for those are the same. It's more or less just a designation. So it looks like there's just a few that were misdesignated as street expired meter instead of the lot. But that's really the only difference between those two.
But we don't have any street.
Correct.
Yes, so, uh, so yeah, it was just, uh, uh, it's like they were designated the wrong code there, but.
Oh.
They're the same.
Okay. Okay.
I have either a question or a correction, James. On your. On your report over here between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, I believe. In February, you're looking at. Says, um, and it's this paper.
Okay.
Your February of twenty twenty-four is twelve, six, twenty-six. And it should be sixteen, two hundred.
Yes.
Fifty-one cents. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I may have been looking at last year's numbers when I input that, let me see.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I, I, that was a mistake.
Okie dokie. So the correct number is the sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-one cents.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
So it wasn't a decrease.
Um.
Year over year, then.
I believe it was still a decrease. Actually, even the twenty twenty-three numbers are not right, James. If I'm not mistaken, the number for February of twenty twenty-three is.
I will, here's what I'll do. I will revise this and just make sure both sides are correct.
Okay.
And then I'll send it back out to the board.
Okay, alright. Any other questions for James? Alright, thank you. I want to find this report. I didn't see Nicole, but she's probably here.
Actually, Nicole is out today. She had a doctor's appointment for her husband, I believe.
Okay. Hope they're doing okay. Um, any questions or you guys wanna look at it still? Um, we're looking at, I can just read it. We're looking at an operating fund of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. And we do have eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six in the conservation trust fund. Total fund is eight seventy-six, five sixty-four. Um, I guess if there is any questions, you guys will have to email either me or Nicole directly. Since she's not here. Hope he's feeling okay and so is their family. Alright? Did anything pop up for the finance report for anyone? Just for that, just so it's known?
The only thing I see different than what I remembered last month was, didn't last month have a charge for errors and omissions insurance?
Since I'm in direct, I don't have that report in front of me.
Yeah, that's. Well, I'll check later and we'll just ask Nicole, but this one, this one doesn't show it, but.
Okay.
Cause I think the numbers on eleven, page eleven of thirteen, the numbers are supposed to be through February, but it disappeared. So I guess we'll just double check later on when Nicole's back.
Okay, that's, that sounds good to me. Anybody else? Alright, thanks, everyone. Um, old business continued. Update on the purchase of the Youth Pass Motel property. I just wanted to let you guys know that the seller lost his dad this past week unexpectedly. And he had to get out of town. So it's going a little bit slower. Um, communication isn't, wasn't great for that. He is back. And we are supposed to get the final reports. Um, for everything, for asbestos mitigation as well, I believe tomorrow. Um, so if needed, I will, or I will email everyone with the reports. I'll forward it to you. And I'm still optimistic that we can close on this property before April first. That's, that's my update on this subject. If someone has a question, I can take it. Well, try. Okay, no questions about that?
No, it's fine. If you wanna go back and go check, go for it. And then once I'm finished with this, I can.
Discussion, next, next subject is the discussion on grant for lighting in the lot.
Yeah, back to the, uh, building, the purchase of this.
Yes, right.
I did look into insurance on this and the way our insurance is. Uh, the only thing that we have that really is insured is the bathroom. Because that's a structure. Our parking lots aren't insured, uh, other than liability.
Okay.
If some tree falls on somebody or something like that. And so in this property, is there? Uh, or maybe it's premature, but do we, will we need some sort of demolition insurance? Or is that something that a demolition company takes care of?
I believe it will be on the actual company that does the work, but I can, I can look into it regardless. The minute we close on the property, we will need to have proof of insurance, even if it's liability or, you know, just adding those addresses. To the policy, just so we're covered for liability. I don't, I don't think we'll need to carry specific or, you know, insurance on the actual buildings. Since they're not, I'm guessing they won't be there much longer. But we will need to show the title company that we have some proof of insurance for that property. So that was, that was the main thing.
Okay. Okay, I'll look into that further.
Okay, thank, thank you, Larry. Thank you. Uh, Mike, you had a question or anybody else? Roll? Okay, I think that is enough.
Nope.
Okay, alright. Um, alright, the next thing on the agenda is a discussion. It's something that I wanted to bring up. Since I was listening to city council meetings, multiples. And I heard Denise say something about a grant. The grant is for lighting. And it's for lots lighting. So, um, it was just something that I heard. I just wanted to bring it up. I'm hoping that the city, when they do get the grant or when they're asking for the grant, they will ask for, for all the lots and not just theirs. Um, I just wanted to bring it up and, and I was hoping maybe Roy can give us any kind of information on that. I know Denise is not here, but Roy sometimes is with us or Juan, which is here. Juan, do you know anything about that?
You can know all the specifics on that, but I can get that information and forward it to everyone.
Okay, that would be, that would be awesome. Um. I'm gonna bring one more thing that kinda bothered me this past month. Um, watching city council meetings, I've noticed the park and ride. Um. Presentation. It was done by, I believe her name was Tara and Juan.
Yes.
Well, um, what bothered me over there, Juan, is we, you guys sent an email, you and Tara. Sent a specific email, asking about, about this subject. I forwarded to the metro. And they decided not to carry it. I emailed you back, you and Tara both are on this email. And I specifically said we're not interested in adding it. Yet, when I looked at city council meetings. You guys were both there presenting it, like we've never gave you an answer.
I didn't, I didn't get that email. Yeah, Shami, and I apologize. I didn't get that. I did get that email, but it was until after. So.
That email was.
There were several emails that were going back and forth and I'm not sure if that was one of them.
That email, you guys asked on February sixth.
Right.
I passed to the board and in twenty-four hours, we gave you an answer on February twelfth, on February seventh. The presentation was February thirteenth. So, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure why it went this way.
Hey, Shami?
Yes.
You can include me in those emails, too.
Okay, I, I mean, I could. Um, but when I got it, it was by Juan and Tara and I didn't think it's gonna be, uh. Um, I didn't think it's gonna be an issue.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Um, I already, I actually saw one of city council members. I've seen Shada on the street a couple of days ago and I did tell him about this issue. I wanted to let you know as well, but I just didn't get a chance. To be honest with you, I saw, I saw a city council meeting at about two A M. I was just, you know, sometimes I just see it late at night. I have seen multiples and I got to it around two A M. And I was not happy. So I decided not to email that night because I was really mad, disappointed, to be honest with you. Um. When that happens to me, it looks like, you know, no matter what we say, so. We just.
Yeah, Shami, but that was one of the reasons we didn't just do it. I did go ahead and ask you. And I do apologize for the oversight, but I, we didn't just go up to the presentation without asking you. I did ask you and, you know, I did appreciate your response, but it was just something that got overlooked. And.
By.
We were honored anyways, you know, if.
Overlooked by you and Tara that was sitting next to you.
I can't speak for, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm not speaking for Tara. So I do apologize for that.
Okay, well, alright, thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted to just put it out there and tell you my concern.
Sure.
I just.
Yeah, cause I know, I know Tara kept bringing it up and the first thing I told her, you know, we need to run it by Shami first, you know, to make sure he approves. So I was the one that suggested to her, we needed to reach out to you. It was just something that got overlooked and we apologize for that again.
I'm, I appreciate it, Juan, but you guys also have to understand that I'm not the only one that gives you an answer. There is a full board here. And, you know, at some level, you know, I can just tell you yes or no on something small, but when it's something major. Something that, you know, involves, you know, the lots and what to put next to it or in it or. I have to ask these folks, all of, each one of us has a vote here. I might say no to something, but they see it differently and they would say yes.
Sure. One thing we could do is we can, moving forward, I can email everyone if you, if that's something you.
That's, that's, you know, if you email all of them or not, it's, it wasn't what I was talking about. I was hoping that. You know, by, by, by giving us a little bit more time, I mean, you asked six days before you already have a presentation in front of city council. This wasn't a six-day kind of matter, I don't think. You guys knew about it a long time before that, but yet you remember to ask seven days before and that's the issue. You have to give us time as well. You know, I need to add it to the agenda, you know, and then everybody needs to vote on. When you ask this last second, what happens is, you know, first of all, I need to look at my email and, and, and see that it's important. And then I forwarded to, to the metro board. And then sometimes they won't have the time to look at their email. So it's just gotta, I think it just needs to be organized a little bit better. That's.
Sure, and just, and just to add to what you're saying, these weren't like, these were just suggested, suggested locations that were including, those were including even our locations that we suggested. Because council still needed to approve, you know, even our location. So there weren't like decisions we made. These are where they're gonna go. And that's why we suggested, you know, let's reach out to Shami and see if we can at least run it by, you know, run it by you to see if that, that could be a possibility. You know, that was it. But we could do that in the future. Even if they're small decisions, we'll, we'll make sure we let you know ahead of time and inform it to everyone.
It just helps me, just doesn't put me in a corner, you know, or, you know, let me decide for everyone. I don't want. It just helps me, it just doesn't put me in a corner, you know, or, or, you know, let me decide for everyone, I don't wanna do that. Uh, you know, like I said, sometimes my opinion is different than uh everyone else's, so.
Sure, sure, I agree.
Alright, I appreciate it. Any questions, uh?
Well, I'd just like to add, there's a lot of bike racks in Manitou. And I see more bikes locked up to trees and light posts or signposts than I do bike racks. So, I'm not really sure why we need more bike racks. I, I see a lot of empty ones.
Those are those uh Pike and Ride, um, those are the bikes uh that uh somebody can rent, uh. Not to mention, we have, I believe we have two businesses in town that are doing the same thing, so in, in, in. In a perspective. We are bringing, or the city of Manitou Springs is bringing, you know, competition to two businesses that are operating in town. And, and that business is getting twenty-five thousand, I believe that's what it was, every, every year at least.
I think they've, I think so far they've gotten a hundred thousand. So, you know, you have Pike Ride gets a hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money to compete against private enterprise. I don't think that's right, but uh, anyway, I'm just saying that we paid for, we, the city's paid for uh at least. Two rounds of bike racks in the past. And now here comes the third round. So, a- and you know, I just don't see more bikes in town. I, I rode with a group of maybe two thousand riders one time from Memorial Park and Carter Springs up through Manitou. And back, and that was like in the early eighties. And I just don't see as many bicyclists coming to Manitou as there was in the eighties.
Yeah, Mike.
More bike racks.
To, to answer that, we, we do have data that does show, and you, oh. I can send that, eh, that information to you as well, uh, we, we're getting those numbers quarterly. But there is data that is recorded from the, especially from e-bikes, which are the majority that are being used. That does show a, 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 a big number uh that's slightly increasing every, every month.
Right, and I, and I see, I see e-bikes going up and down the street every day. They're the same people and they're not locking them up to uh, to one of your bike racks, they're taking them home. Which is a good thing, I mean, I love, I love, I love e-bikes, you know, I've got, I've got one and I love it. And uh, I've had two before that and they're just wonderful, but what I'm saying is. You go around and you look at the bike racks, you go look at the one at the post office, you look at the one at the bottom of the incline. And there's never a bike locked to either one of them, I mean, almost never. You can't say never, but uh nearly never. But anyway, I mean, I mean, I'm all for bikes, don't get me wrong, and we've got a bike rack at uh. At Wichita and maybe uh it doesn't fit the e-bikes now with the bigger tires. Maybe we need to get rid of that other one that we paid for already with. Money that people came and asked city council for to build those, but uh, anyway. Uh, I think though. That. You know, i- it's just a funny business that you put out e-bikes and then you pay somebody to drive around in a. In a gasoline-powered van to go pick them up and charge them and maintain them, et cetera. But uh.
Let me tell you, Mike, when I heard the um presentation, I think it was uh the mayor that says that the average ride over there. Cost the city about twenty-some dollar, uh, was it twenty-some dollars?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, I don't know about that investment, but it's not my call anyway, um, I, 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 I just, I was concerned. Uh, especially about liability, having it all over there at uh Love, by Lover's Lane, next to the trucks, um, just like uh Mr. Shada, so. Um, it was not, was not a good, uh, was not a good location either, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, anyway, that's all I've got to say about it is, is that I see the bike racks way underutilized, but uh. I do see people loving to lock their bikes up to signposts and telephone poles and. It's, it's a funny world, but that's what people prefer. Seth, Nicole?
Can I, could I just clarify the, the Pike Ride thing a little?
Absolutely, Natalie.
Sure, um, so yes, I do, I do appreciate um what you said, and I do think that we try to be aware of that, um, that element of competing with um the for-profit. Business community, um, I do believe that Pike Ride is a, a little different in that. The idea is that you would ride it somewhere, right, and park and stop paying, so you would like ride it to downtown Collar Springs. Park it and then stop paying, go to work for eight hours, get back on it and ride it somewhere else, so it's a different. System that we're trying to support, um, I understand that maybe it's not always working that way, but I just wanted you to just say that. It's not the same as an e-bike business, it's a different program. Now, whether it's working or not and all those other things, that's another conversation, but I just wanted to clarify that it's a slightly different. It's a slightly different program, it's not necessarily the business model that you would compare to the other ones, so just to clarify a little.
Yeah, it's got an employee driving around in a gasoline vehicle to pick them up and recharge them and, and maintain them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm not saying it's a strict system, I'm just saying that it's not the same, it's not a, it's not direct competition to the, the e-bike businesses, so.
One more point when I heard something, go ahead, Mike, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, the, no, that's okay, I, I, I will bite my tongue on that one.
Okay, uh, one last thing about that is uh I believe Pike and Ride, we're supposed to do another, one more station, Natalie, do you know if they're gonna do that?
You mean, there, there was that one that was hanging out there, like the Soda Springs Park one, I don't think they have a participation yet, right? Juan, there, we're, we're waiting on the.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna happen because we do have a construction that's coming up uh in September, so we're gonna delay that. That location.
Okay, for the record, I think the mayor was right, uh, the city already paid for it. And if there is a station that wasn't installed, um, it should be deducted from what you, uh, the city is giving them, uh, in the future, but that's just uh. My opinion, uh, they're just showing up and asking for more money before they fulfill their commitment, um, their earlier. Um, but, okay, um, I'll, I'll let that be as well. Um, anybody has a question or a comment? Alright, um. Our next thing is public comment, I'm not sure if there is public with us, but if there is, raise your hand.
One second, we skipped the um mobility and parking board report, do we wanna go back to that?
Uh, yes, please, I apologize, yes.
Juan?
So, yeah, so uh, we, we had a work section, we had a work session yesterday uh to uh, see if we could get a, receive approval for uh VIA. But right now, due to the, the number of projects that we have in place right now, we're, we're gonna get it, get that delayed to maybe sometime next year.
Okay.
That was the only thing that we had in our uh agenda yesterday for the work session.
Any new information about those two electric vehicles that were running over the weekend? Can we get a little bit more information, how many hours did they last, um? And. Were the people on it this weekend, or was it just a test run?
We're, we're running it for a couple of weeks, uh, because of the weather, we may extend it to an additional week. Uh, we have data, I believe, for one day, um, James, you have those numbers correct for Saturday? James, can you hear me? You, you're on mute.
Do you see that?
You're, you're on mute.
James, we can't hear you.
James?
Was there anything else on the mobility and parking uh meeting?
That was it, uh, as far, I'm sorry, uh, as far as the trams. So, we're running them right now just for spring break, uh, Thursday through Sunday. Uh, we started this weekend, uh, so because of the weather, we're gonna extend it probably for one more week. Uh, and then we're, we're trekking them, a ridership, battery live, uh, battery temperature. And we should be able to show those numbers, uh, James, I think he took his mute off. Can you share the numbers, uh, James, for Saturday, of the, the ridership numbers?
Uh, yes.
So, for Saturday, um, the Hiawatha lot, we picked up. Five people, um, dropped off five. Um, Wichita lot, looks like we picked, uh. Uh, it looks like we picked up eleven in Wichita.
Where was the five people, I'm sorry?
Uh, so, uh. We, so in Hiawatha lot, we picked up six people, dropped off five. Uh, Wichita lot, we picked up eleven people. And we did not have any drop-offs in the Wichita lot. Um, Smithy, we had five people picked up and dropped off. We dropped off fifteen at Smithy Lot.
So, this is from running from like downtown back to the Smithy Lot?
Yes, so we're, we're basically bouncing between those three parking lots right now, so. We're, we're picking up at, at Hiawatha, we're picking up and dropping off at Wichita, and then we're picking up and dropping off down at Smithy.
And the others we're running it right now is uh ten AM to four PM.
On both one or just the one?
Come again?
Uh, on both of them, both of them are working at the same time, ten to four?
Yeah, eh, yeah, and that's part of the, as soon as, one of them, each one of them runs roughly about three hours. So, with the way, you know, it, it, it just, it's to be determined right now.
Got it, thank you. And it's an overnight charge?
Yes, so they, they charge overnight, as soon as they're done with the vehicle, we charge them and overnight, they're fully charged by the morning.
Okay, is the charging station? Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I was just gonna say for three and a half hours, but uh, the other thing that I noticed this weekend, just to add to this shuttle. Uh, discussion is like last summer and last fall, the large number of walkers. That are coming down from the Cog Railway in the afternoon when it drops off. Um, there's enough people to fill another whole full-size bus. But they're walking down into town, and the reason they're walking into town is they're parking in downtown. They're not parking up at the cog, they're not parking at the cog's satellite parking lot, which is at thirty-third and Pike's Peak avenues. They're parking in Manitou downtown while they're up on the mountain, uh, visiting Pike's Peak. And then, when they get off the train, they have to walk down the sidewalk. Um, and so here we are, we've got some little golf carts that make people feel good. Because they're powered by electricity that's powered by coal. But then we have all these people walking down the sidewalk, and frankly, they're usually about my age. And they look pretty beat when they get down to us. Now, sure, there's a few younger ones, but the ones that are about ready to fall over dead are the ones that I notice. And so we have these little electric shuttles that are picking up five people. But we could have really used another full bus coming down from the Cog Railway. So, just what I noticed, you know, it's not my opinion, it's just an observation.
And you noticed it cuz you're right there, Mike.
Yeah, we're right here, we got the big picture windows. You bet.
Yep. Alright, so, anything else on the mobility and parking board report?
I didn't attend this last meeting, but there is new leadership with that board. Um, Bill is no longer the leader, I, I don't know, president, I don't, or chairman, it's Corey now.
Okay.
Of course, Corey Sutella, so.
Uh, what's the reason for Bill, uh, did he, did he leave or?
No, he, he wanted to continue, but uh, the, the majority of the, the members, we um. Chose to, to move on, Corey wanted to take over leadership of that, and he has for some time, so, um.
Yeah, I've seen multiple meetings, uh, that he, that he ran.
Yeah, he's, he's, you know, we all see him, he's very active, um, so. Uh, it wasn't too, uh, Bill has been incredible for the last thirty years here in Manitou, so. It's just a, a change at, at the top, he's gonna still be in, in the board, but, but Corey is gonna be the leader now and uh. Um, so, that's what they're doing.
Okay, well, thanks for the update on that, was there anything else? Oh. Okay. Um. New eyes or? I'm, I'm, I'm for it, new, new people, new eyes, new ways, um, it's good. Alright, um, Elena, do we need to approve all the reports?
Yes, please, just one motion is fine.
Okay, um, does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, we, we approve the reports as written.
I'll, is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Barzati, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that would be five to zero. Alright, so. I'll go back to public comment just in case I miss someone. Alright, I don't think anyone's here, um, if. Anybody wants to say anything else before we adjourn?
Uh, good luck with the, um, the seller of the property, uh. Uh, thank you for all the, the updates and all the work you've been doing on that, so, nothing to say until after. It goes through, then we'll have a lot to talk about, I have a feeling, but in the meantime, just keep doing what you're doing.
Uh, thank you, thank you, uh, I'll, I'll have a little bit more information, uh. Um, I was told Thursday, before the end of the week, the minute I have it, I will forward it to everyone. Um, um, and if a discussion is needed or a meeting, um, a special meeting, um, we, we can definitely do that as well, if needed. Um, alright?
I would like to second what Ralph just said, uh, thanks, Shami, for all the work you've done on this.
Well, thank you, guys, there is, if, if we do purchase this property, um, there is a lot of work there. Um, but, um, it's something I love doing. Um, and uh, I, I'm sure I'll ask for help from each and every one of you in, in different aspects, like I did with Larry with the insurance. Um, and I, and I appreciate you all, um, so thank you so much. Alright, if there's nothing else?
Um, I do have just, I, I've been taking a look at the, the report that you had, uh, requested correction on. And looking at it, the, the numbers are correct. From what I'm seeing, this chart is just paystation revenue. It doesn't include the, the hangtag revenue, so it's just what people are paying at the machine or, or through the, the app. Um, so.
You're talking about the twelve thousand, six twenty-six?
Yes, so that is correct on there, so this, this chart is only comparing paystation revenue. Whereas the other report I have, that's comparing total revenue, uh, month to month and then has the. Whereas the other report I have, that's comparing total revenue uh month to month and then has the breakdowns.
Um.
Just so, if it would be better, I can change the chart to match that other report if that, if that makes more sense.
I I I think it does, cause revenue is revenue, and I'd like to know about all of it, not not a part of it.
Okay. That's easy, easy enough for me to change, so I'll I'll revamp this at the next meeting and it'll show. Total revenue, that way it matches the other report that breaks down everything.
That's awesome, thank you, thank you, James, I appreciate you. Uh anything else, you guys? Alright, this meeting is adjourned, thanks to everyone for being here today. Thanks, Shemi.
Thanks, guys.
See you all around town.
Thank, thank you all.